All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I have five thirty, so I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission to Order and call on Commissioner Joey Trevino to leave us in an invitation.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce the Disabled American Veterans, Lucy Lofton, and she would step up to the podium in front of everybody and give us her...
Please uncover. Today's scripture is, "Love your enemies." But I say unto you, Lord, your enemies, bless them that curse you; do good to them that hate you; and pray for them which despitfully use you and persecute you. As a representative of veterans, I'd just like to share what is a veteran. A veteran is a person who fell in love with their country for better, for worse, for richer, for poorer, in sickness and in health. A veteran is a person who is willingly to lay down their life for the stature of liberty so that he or she or poor huddled masses, her homeless, her temptess, toss may breath free and may enjoy life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. A veteran is a person who does what he or she must do in spite of her personal consequences, in spite of obstacles and dangers and pressures, for that is the basic of all human morality. A veteran is one who gets a lump in the throat when he or she sees our beloved flag; one who will fight to protect our beautiful flag from those who dare dishonor it. A veteran is one who pays their taxes willingly, serves their country honorably, and cherishes their freedom passionately. A veteran is one well-deserving of our appreciation, our love, and our prayers 365 days a year. Peace be with you, my dear sisters and brothers. Amen.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I have the privilege of leaving this.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to go to item one now, which is announcing the public events already.
Yes.
Go ahead. We have a number, again, a number of events between now and December. We have the, this coming Saturday, we have the National Make a Difference Day, which Park Superintendent will go into more detail with you in a little while. Two big events, two huge events between now and the next City Commission meeting. We have our third annual Harligen's Halloween in the Park, and that's at Rangeville Road Park. The weekend after that, at Long C Hill Park, we have our first-ever Blues on the Hill concert in November. And both the headliner, be the Texas Tornadoes and the Dallas Cowboys on tour, which will be cheerleaders, an ex-player or two, the Pro Shop, the museum. We're anticipating a big crowd at both of those. The weekend after that, we have the opening and the ceremony at the Veterans Memorial. We have Diabetes Walk at McKelvey, weekend after that. And then the Thursday after Thanksgiving, the week after Thanksgiving, we have the annual lighting of the Arroyo. This is the advertisement for our Halloween event. These are on the boards at a number of parks around the town. We're pushing heavy this year to attract some folks from outside of town. This is the advertisement that we put in the various newspapers across the valley, plus the bargain book. And we have fourteen thousand of these in many forms that are going into the school district, so all the kids are going to be on notice of this event. That's next Saturday, six to nine, Rangeville Road Park. This is the third annual event. The first year we put it on, we estimated about three thousand; last year, five thousand. So hopefully that trend continues this year. These are the two advertisements for the November third concert at Long C Hill Park, the Texas Tornadoes. This is, the one on the left is the city's advertisement for the Blues on the Hill concert and then the Dallas Cowboys event. The one on the right is the Dallas Cowboys advertisement for the event. And so we're anticipating, again, a large, large crowd. We're preparing for between eight and ten thousand folks for that event, so I'll hope everybody comes out.
Don't we have a museum event this week? Can you take some more?
It's more than I... That bit for the museum is thanks to Harligen.
Tickets are...
At the museum.
And then Saturday is a golfing tournament, the Ruppery Club, Friday, Harligen Ruppery Club is putting on a golfing tournament. I'm sending you, and you, and you, and you email on it right now. Golfers excel.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and move us to, were there any public announcements?
I have another public announcement.
Okay. Mr. Randolph, please.
For the record, my name is Ruben Randolph. I'm the director of the Public Library. If you remember, over the summer, I had asked you for extra money, additional money for books, for our book collection. And I'm here today to announce that we have eBooks at the library. So you'll be able, I asked Elena to pass out some information on how to get an eBook at the library. You do need a library card. Once you get your library card, you can download up to five eBooks at a time. You'll have twenty-one days, and then, like Robert said, over the summer, we don't have fines, so they'll just go away after twenty-one days. Okay? I wanted you all to know first, because tomorrow or the next day, we hopefully will have a story in the Valley Morning Star announcing it to the rest of the citizens of Harligen.
Just a couple of questions. How does that work? Do you read it off of the library's website, or do you download it onto a proprietary software?
If you read the instructions here, you go to a website, and yeah, you download a couple of apps that allow you to download either for Kindle or anything else. And once you do that, you can basically search the collection, browse through the collection, select a title, and download it.
And you get twenty-one days?
And you get twenty-one days. Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So everyone else has an announcement regarding a public event?
I do.
State your name.
Good evening. My name is Yolanda Shawfit, and I want to come, I'm here, first of all, to invite each and every one of you to our Get Out the Vote Pachanga. This will be this Sunday at one o'clock at Dixieland Park. Mr. Sines sends you a special invitation to whoever wants to attend. And it won't, you know, it's all afternoon, fun, games, music, the whole thing, at Dixieland Park at one o'clock. And any candidate can go. This is Luis Sines, who is putting all this together, and he asked us to come and ask you to all come. I want you to know that I want to invite each and every one of the veterans as well, because if anybody deserves to go and get a free meal, it's them throughout the year. But unfortunately, we're just at, for one, that one day on Sunday. The other thing that I was going to speak about, it's slash, can I speak about it or no? Because it's not an event.
Not an event, but I'm, you're in line tonight, I'm going to move.
Oh, how wonderful. Uh-huh. This has to do with...
Citizen communication. So if you're done making your public announcement...
This is my public announcement.
Well, I think you already made your announcement. So please sit down. I'll call you again.
Oh, on the other one. Okay, that's about it. Five oh one C. There's no five oh one C on this individual that came before you all for seven years. There's no five oh one C. Okay, thank you.
All right. I'm going to bring, go ahead and bring item thirty-one now at this time. First of all, the Minister Fred Randolph and Art Cohen.
Fred Randolph.
And Art, are you going to make your presentation?
Art didn't want to come.
Okay, then, and you have to, by the way, just be sure we get this right. Speak, as citizen communication, you have to state your name, you have to state your voter registration address. A voter registration or your permanent address if you're not registered to vote.
Okay, thank you. My name is Fred Randolph, and I live at seventeen forty-nine Apple Court.
In Harligen?
In Harligen, Texas. And I'm here to give thanks to you guys. The Veterans Memorial Project Committee recently purchased a full set of eight military parade flags with a donation of $2,300. These include one, each four-by-six-foot, American Army, Marine Corps, Navy, Air Force, Coast Guard, Merchant Marine, and POW/MIA flags on nine-foot oak staffs, complete with friends and tassel cords and floorstands. In addition, there are eight new white carry belts. As a special thank you to the city for their assist with the construction of the New York, of the new Veterans Memorial, the committee is donating these flags and accessories to the city of Harligen. They've been delivered to the Harligen Police Department under the auspices of Harligen Police Department Sergeant Sal Carmona for display or storage with the request that they be made available to any legitimate organization for parades or ceremonies as deemed appropriate. We thank you very, very kindly for all of your backing. Thank you very much.
That's a wonderful gift, Mr. Randolph and everyone who's associated with the Veterans Memorial and the donor. Thank you so much. I think that's going to be a great tool that the city can use. Thank you. Next.
Yolanda Shawfit? Yolanda Shawfit?
Is that the citizens' communication?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Yolanda Shawfit, two eighty-four at the Palmas, here in Harligen. My thing was, October the third, I was here, and it was approved that this individual got permission to use the swimming pool because he cleaned, he had a five oh one C. For seven, eight years, he's been using the pool with a five oh one C. There's no such thing under his name. The thing that made me upset was that he had spit in the pool when elderly disabled people were there. That hurts. That really hurts. They couldn't get out of the pool quick enough. They were in there because of their health. They were in there because they were doing aerobics too, because they had surgeries on their knees, and this man just spit in there. Now, the father, the son of the lady that was right next to him when he spit in the pool came forward to talk to you, and to you, it didn't really matter. The aerobic teacher came to talk to you, it didn't really matter, because you only approved it on October the third. So I decided to do a little research myself. These are elderly people, disabled people. This is a man who's been poking everybody's eyes for seven, eight years, and he has a five oh one C, nonprofit organization, which does not exist. I checked over and over, and I started with the Secretary of State. So I wish you all would do something about it, because I already reported this to the DA and also to the other proper authorities. Thank you very much, and you have a blessed day.
Ray Candia? From the Hope Line?
I was gonna, I didn't know if my partner, okay. My name is Reynaldo Candia, three twenty North Oscar Street here in Harligen. I was gonna speak in case Mr. Allen didn't show up, so, because he was late.
Is this on the item twenty-five?
Yeah, so we're gonna, so we're gonna wait until...
I'll call you back, I'll call you all back up, or whoever wants to speak.
Okay.
We're gonna bring that item up shortly, okay?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Let me go to the, item number two. We'll do items number two and three, and then we'll go to item twenty-five. Item number two is Presentation of Proclamation for Proclaiming Hope Line Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we can have the Texas Family Outreach Representatives, Marcus Bianluella, the board president, and Alma Herrera, the executive director, Rick Castillo, Assistant Manager of Horizon Wireless. Y'all, y'all should come up here and stand and face in that direction so that they can take your picture. Like the welcome, and all of you, and let me just read this proclamation. Thank you. Have a few words to you all. Whereas domestic violence affects the entire community, not just the victim, whereas one in three women will be a victim of domestic violence in her lifetime nationally, and whereas Texas generates the second highest volume of calls to the National Domestic Violence Hotline of any state, and whereas the Horizon Wireless Hope Line program has launched to support survivors of domestic violence in communities it serves, and whereas the Horizon Wireless Hope Line program has collected more than nine million phones nationally to provide a lifeline for survivors of domestic violence, and whereas the Hope Line program has also distributed more than one hundred and twenty-three thousand phones with more than four hundred and six million minutes of free wireless service to victims of domestic violence nationally, and whereas the Hope Line program has awarded grants of more than fourteen point two million dollars to organizations across the country working to prevent and end domestic violence, and whereas working together with Horizon Wireless to encourage Harligen residents to donate their no-longer-used wireless phones and accessories to support local survivors of domestic violence, and therefore be resolved by Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harligen, Texas, on behalf of the City Commission to hereby proclaim October two thousand twelve as Hope Line Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Harligen. So I want to present the proclamation to Mr. Bianluella. Thank you so much for the work that your organization does in our community on what's a really very important topic and subject. For a long time, we never talked about it, and now we're starting to talk about it to make sure that people understand this is something that we need to address. What shall I say? Any comment?
On behalf of Horizon Wireless, I would like to take the time to thank you and the City of Harligen for the support towards putting an end to domestic violence. Domestic violence is an issue that is very close to the heart of Horizon Wireless' goal. The Hope Line program for Horizon Wireless supports the community for every person, like you said, and the communication tool for domestic survivors. Okay? October is the National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and to commemorate the love and continuous support of Horizon Wireless, I would like to present the Hope Line. Glad the Tippettex Family Outreach has reached the chat, and we have Board President Martin Allen. Be on the same board.
On behalf of the Board Director of Tippettex Family Outreach, Mayor Chris Boswell, Commissioners, thank you very much. If you have any used cell phones, we'd be glad to take them now if you want. But our Executive Director, Alma Herrera, our caseworker, Lucy Adona, and Kristi, connect with mine, and also Kevin Ty. Thank you very much for all your help and look forward to seeing cell phones. Thank you.
That's a great gift. We appreciate the rise of being such a great community, citizens, and support, and a great charitable charity life organization. Congratulations. We're located in that Perry Drive. Thank God that they're in the office of that Perry Drive. Item three is the Neighborhood Cleanup Sweep on Rangeville Road on South Dakota Street between Wyoming Drive and Ossiana Circle. Item five.
We're another successful cleaning sweep we did this past weekend, Saturday morning. I'd like to thank the people that came out early and picked up a lot of debris, especially the group from Vida. Kristi, are you still there? I'd like to acknowledge you and your group. Are they here? Some of them here? Well, actually, we had almost thirty people out there. Thirty people was, you know, we had a good turnout. It was actually a small area, but we got three point five fourths of debris and twenty-six tires. And then as soon as we passed by again, there was more debris coming back on the way out, so it was a good, positive sweep for the neighborhood, and we got a lot of compliments from all the neighborhoods. So let's keep on doing this. I think they have some pictures here. There you go. See, you can tell they were wearing their shirts and volunteer staff. Staff did a great job, the public works, and our code enforcement people. Lot of interesting stuff out there. So it was a great success, and thanks, thanks to all the volunteers and Vida also, especially...
Are any of the volunteers that, when I came out on Saturday here, if you are, stand up. If you're here, or any of our staff members too, for that matter, if you're out there. Congratulations. Thank you so much for what you did. We always appreciate the volunteers who come out. This is an important, important issue for us, so we thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and skip into item twenty-five, Discuss, Consider, Take Action on the Progress for Harligen Chapter one twenty-one, Disabled American Veterans Request to Advise and Assist in Locating A合适的Facility to Use for DAV and DAV Exhilaration Meetings and Various Support Services for Local Veterans.
Mayor, I may, I put this on the agenda with, along with Commissioner Profeshaw. About a month ago, I was at a meeting, a neighborhood meeting, and Gene Allen, who's also my appointment to the Veterans Advisory Board, came up to me and said, "Commissioner, we need a, we need a home. We're homeless." So we started brainstorming the next day, and we were a great group here, and thought of some different ideas. And along with what we did at the Harligen Outreach Center at the old police department, I gave them a tour of that, also with the old fire station on San Houston, gave them a tour of that, just giving them some ideas. And since then, their board hasn't met, their executive board hasn't met, but it's getting a lot more enthusiasm with the project. And we've kind of identified other buildings in town that may be able to house them. So what I'd like to do is, after Gene talks, is maybe discuss amongst us about helping the veterans gain a home for their outreach center or their activity center, and maybe do a feasibility study for them in finding them a home. And with that, I'll let Gene Allen speak.
Yes. Mayor, Commissioners, staff, I'm Gene Allen, Eugene Allen, twenty-eight oh nine Clifford, Mr. Mentor's district. What I'd like to do is just give you a little bit of overview of the veterans that are surrounding us here. We have quite a few here today representing us. We're a cohesive group of different organizations, and we do a lot of community service and assistance to veterans among us. I particularly, in my case, I'm a member of several organizations that are veterans organizations and also a volunteer with the, registered volunteer with the Veterans Administration. The DAV, the organization I'm speaking for today, has a hundred, one million, two hundred thousand members. It's a big org, they were formed in nineteen twenty, and then by act of Congress, they were classified as a federal organization in nineteen thirty-two. The, this, this group operates through state districts and then through chapters. We have a chapter in town, in this area, Chapter one twenty-one. And Chapter one twenty-one has about three hundred and seventy-six members. We meet monthly. We're in and about the community rather quietly. We are helping veterans who are in trouble. For example, eighteen veterans die every day by suicide, and so we're very concerned about that. We mentor these veterans. The DAV has a transitional service, service officers in a hundred and nine military facilities. They're working with Iraqi and Vietnam veterans to simulate them into the community as best we can and to advise them as to their benefits and their medical, the gyrations you have to go through, to go through the VA and get your medical benefits and so forth. So we get them enrolled in the VA, and then we don't give up on them, we follow them. And so the same thing occurs with the VFW and the American Legion and Vietnam veterans, Catholic War Veterans, Jewish War Veterans, all these organizations that are clustered around this area. We also do homeless programs and disaster relief. The thing that, I've been a member since nineteen ninety-nine, however, not until last year that I come forward and join because I have post-traumatic distress disorder, and that tends to have a veteran isolate himself. When I came forward, I found out after a year that indeed, this is a homeless chapter. There are two hundred and seventy-six veterans in Chapter one twenty-one that have been meeting at the VFW coffee shops, American Legion, they've never had a home. And I pointed that out to the VA. I said, "This is the biggest homeless group you have in town." So we also, then we, I mentioned it to Commissioner Trevino, and we started looking at someplace that we could find as a home. And what I found out, before we got in gear too far, which is just a few days ago, that Seguin, Texas, has a fire department that they leased to Chapter sixty-one of the DAV in Seguin. And so I traveled to Seguin, and what I'll do if the, our chaplain would pass these out to the folks at the front table. This is a sample of the Seguin, Seguin, Texas, DAV flyer, and what that reflects is the activities, like an umbrella overview of the activities that occur within that former fire station. In that case, in the case of the fire station in Seguin, that, that chapter does a lot, has a lot of things. They have a color guard there, they have counseling, a lot of counseling that goes on, they hold their meetings there, and they also have, they work with the State of Texas Health Department and have group meetings on counseling, and so they gather together and they have Bible study. And consequently, since they've worked with the State of Texas, they're able to procure a ninety thousand dollar grant from the Blue Bonnet HMHR, and that allowed them to convert that fire station, and they lease it for a ten-year period, and convert it over to their use and to bring it up to good, healthy standards for them. So we, we had fifteen of us go out and look at this fire station. It's on Bell Street in San Antonio. It's vacant. We're interested in trying to discuss this with you. I delivered a reflection of our interest to your city manager yesterday, so there's a letter on file, which he's acknowledging today. I would like to just pursue that as an open, open conversation. What we'd like, if we go forward with this, we'd like to see that it's a safe building, and it's functional and usable and meets the needs and serves the community and gets the building so it's not full of graffiti and the windows knocked in and so forth. So before I leave, I'd just like to acknowledge, if all the veterans here would stand up, please. I'd like to acknowledge all these veterans, and particularly Reyes Gonzalez, Jaime Cavassos, Fred Cavassos, Eddie Saldivar, Sam Cardenas, Jose Lial, Gloria Cardenas, and Missy Lofton. They all serve on the, on a new committee that we just put together to try and find a home. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you, Commissioners and staff.
Mayor, again, I'd like to just reiterate what I'd like to say to Commissioners and staff to maybe help the DAV do a feasibility study on that building and maybe another building. We talked earlier this week with Judge Carlos Coscos on maybe using the building here down the street, the old Sheriff's Office and JP Office that they have up for sale. So it, once their need of getting this feasibility study, what their needs are and what type of facility that they need, I'd like to see if we could help them out and... of facility that they need, I'd like to see if we could help them out and aid in this feasibility study.
I mean, I would like to say second too. I mean, I think the more that we can do for the veterans, the better off we are. My father was a veteran, he's a current war veteran. And I even supported the Veterans Board, but kind of apart from misconception, with Art sitting back there. And I mean, I will support the veterans 100% all the time, no matter what. And I really believe that we as a city are obligated and be responsible, really, to find you guys a place to go because you guys don't have a place to go. And I really believe that we should go on this and give staff directions and do a feasibility study in the old firehouse or try to work out of the old accounting, a needed building. I think this is what we need.
How much time do you, how much time do you need in the building every day? Or is it a weekly thing? Or is it, you know, two or three times a week? Or how long would you say you would be needing a facility?
It's, we have a conglomerate of things that we do, but one of the things I can focus on for you is the veteran, we have registered DAV-trained Veteran Service Officers and they have a little space, tight little space at the VA and they have two officers in there. We have five or six or sets. I can't really, I don't have the exact number, but we have trained officers who are there every day. So it would be potentially a daily, like private office for each one because we discuss confidential traumatic events with these veterans. So that's a daily thing. The other thing is we also have, through the state and through the DAV, we have certified peer counselors. That's emotional counseling and that's whenever. I mean, we just, we get people in jail, we go get them out of jail and bring them and talk to them and try to get a jail diversion, get them rehabilitated. So it'd be about a daily thing. Our meetings are once a month. We also have an auxiliary unit. Right now, we're in the VA and we're sharing the space and we conduct different types of meetings. So we're just cross-talking all the time and it's pretty difficult. But that's, the timing you're interested is once a month for that. And then we have executive staff meetings and planning. We have drilling for the honor guard. We have an honor guard that does funerals and memorials, but that's a composite. Again, we have VA, DAV, but we could use this facility for storing the weapons in a safe place and the flags and maybe borrowing the city's flags for events. So to answer your question, probably just about every day, we'd have somebody there.
Gene, I'd like to ask you one question.
Yes, sir.
You're going to have people there that are going to go ahead and assist veterans for aid through the VA, right?
Yes, exactly.
So that's going to be, that's a daily thing. That's not a...
Right. Yeah, the other thing is we, I've just been here a year, but I already found out, we're getting hospital beds and wheelchairs and scooters and crutches donated to us. We put them in our homes and we try to find places to put those. So we would be finding storage and keeping that equipment there and then having the veteran that needs it. And then like we have wheelchair that didn't have a battery, so we run over to McPherson's and we try to buy a battery. So it's just a lot of activity that goes on. And the other thing is we, there are some other organizations like the Vietnam Veterans to America, this would be a home for them, for their meetings also, because they're meeting in apartment complexes and so forth. We really need help.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Seems like we just ought to ask the city manager to assign some staff to look at this more closely and see what, see what we might be able to help with.
We have a, you know, a sample of what we did with the outreach center, what Tommy Ravitas came to the City Commission with and they've looked at it and something similar I think we can do with them eventually. So I'd like to see the staff work on that also.
We'll come back with some options for the equation.
All right. We'll turn the staff loose on this, take a look at it and see what we can come up with that would work hopefully for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you release the veterans? Leave them?
No, we want you to stand up. Feel our pain for the rest of the meeting. Thank you all for coming and we're glad to have you here anytime. All right, item four is the approval of the minutes, the regular meeting is September 5th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All those members say aye. Motion carries. Take item 5A, the consent agenda out of order and go to second final, or take it out separately. Second final reading to approve the adopt ordinance amending the code ordinance, chapter 130, by adding subsection 130.07 on unlawful substances to prohibit the use of purpose possession and sale of synthetic drugs, as categorized in section 2A of the Texas Health and Safety Code, as well as those substances categorized with the United States Code, 1.1 Control Substances Act.
Mayor, the reason we're taking it out of order is just so that we can have you vote on. At the last time we were on the agenda, there were a couple of tweaks we need to make, we needed to make on it before the second reading. I got one of them in there, but the other one, I realized today, was not quite in there. So I just changed a few words in the purpose clause and I put a copy of the changed ordinance in front of you as it will be adopted tonight on second reading. And just, we just changed some language and took out on the first line of the purpose clause on page two. Instead of the word illegal smoking products, we put unlawful substances in there. So I would ask you just to adopt the ordinance on second reading with those, just that tweak and that's it. And it's a revised copy in front of you.
Mayor, the intent of that language tweak is just to make sure that the language and the terminology we're using in the purpose section is similar in the same sense throughout the legislation. It's a small tweak.
You want to make that a motion, adopt the final?
I make the motion as presented by the city attorney.
Second.
Any discussion? All those members say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Go to the rest of the consent agenda items, 5B through E is your motion to adopt consent agenda. All those members say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like aye. Item 6, discuss and take action to approve the agreement being developed for Operation of Harless and Insect South Texas Medical Foundation. That's the, that's the agreement.
Yes, to find them a co-educational process.
Right.
Mayor, I'll make the motion and we take action to approve the agreement.
Second.
All those members say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like aye. Motion carries. Item 7, consider the replating of a proposed Richard D. E. and Joan M. M. Jove subdivision date resubdivision of 2.764 acres consisting of lots 1 through 4, blocks 9 through 16, block 1, and a 3-foot wide tract fully at an alley and said block Arroyo State subdivision located in the northwest corner of Ed Carey Drive and 77 Sunshine Strip, half associates.
Your Honor, I'd just like to have the record reflected. Commissioner Trevino has left the room because he has a conflict and he has prepared filing affidavit, which I will submit to the city secretary.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. The applicant is requesting to resubdivide 12 existing lots into two larger lots for commercial use. One of the lots would be for a proposed Walgreens, which would be on this corner lot. And the western lot would be for Los Faroe Bank. As you can see, this property is located on northwest corner of 77 Sunshine Strip and Ed Carey Drive. All items on the final checklist have been addressed. Staff is recommending approval.
You guys just go ahead and claim it?
Yes, right.
And Los Faroe itself can then be free. Correct and shut down.
Right.
Okay. Now, go to item A, motion carries. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against the replating? Here, no one opposed the motion, here, and go to item B. Consider and take action to approve replating of a proposed Richard D. E. and Joan M. M. Jove subdivision.
I'd like to make the motion, and the other retired...
I'll second that one for you.
Any discussion? All those members say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like aye. Motion carries. Item 8, consider an ordinance on first reading of a request for a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge in the general GR retail district located in 610 South Lewis Lane, bearing a legal description of 1.69 acres out of blocks 2 and 3, the subdivision, Sheriff and Eagle.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge at about 5,500 square foot building located on Lewis Lane. The previous use of this property was a bar use. This is a new applicant owner from the establishment. This is a subject building, it's on Lewis Lane. This is their proposed site plan. They are providing the required parking islands, landscape items, as you can see on the site plan. They're also proposing a 6-foot solid fence in the southern end of the property to address the residential use to the south of this property. They're proposing a little over about 125 parking spaces, so they are complying with the required parking areas. There's also an existing drive-through convenience store on the subject property. The hours of operation for this bar would be from Tuesday to Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. The request was reviewed by the building department, the fire prevention department, the health department and the engineering department. Neither of the subject department had any objection to the request subject to the applicant complying with the, submitting the proper plans and complying with the required city codes. The police department also reviewed the request and submitted a report for the previous establishment. Again, this is a new applicant, new owner. The police department is also recommending approval of the request subject to the applicant, providing the required surveillance video, adequate lighting and licensed security guard. Public hearing was presented at the P&amp;Z Commission. There was no concerns addressed at the meeting. The affected property owners within a 200-foot radius were notified, which would be within this boundary. Staff received no objections to the request. Staff and the P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval subject to the applicant maintaining the required parking, obtaining their TABC license, providing the 6-foot solid fence, excuse me, providing their surveillance video and maintaining a 30-day retention period, obtaining their proper TABC permits and compliance with the laws administered by the planning, fire prevention building, health and police department. I'll take any questions and the applicant is present for questions.
Along with the cameras and licensed security guard and...
Correct. Right. And the 30-day retention.
They understand all that, I'm sure.
Right, and the applicant has, is in agreement to do that and is present.
One quick follow-up. I should have asked this the last time we covered the issue on the retention on the video. Is there any minimum quality of the recording that maybe PD would want to have some input on? Because I know there's some devices that'll record, but it's very, the shutter speed or the recording speed is such that when you try to do a playback, it's a very sketchy, it'll take a frame shot like every half second or so and it looks very sketchy to record.
The report just said that for them to provide a surveillance video, however the chief is here, it's probably going to...
Yeah, I might want to just ask the PD, he may not be prepared to answer that right now, but I think if we're going to have to hold that recording, that might as well make sure it's a good enough quality that in the event they need to review it, that it's something that they can actually use.
K110, 80 quality or OLED or...
I wouldn't know what that is, but it's something they could want to ask.
3D, wanted 3D.
I have a question. You're the applicant here? Are you owning the building? You own the building currently or leasing yet?
No, I own it.
Okay, and did, did you own, I'm guessing this has been under different names, I've seen Buck Wild there. Did you have, did you own the building then or did you have anything to do with it?
No, sir.
This is all brand new for you?
No, it's all new, for me. Is that it?
Okay.
If we're going to go to a point where, you know, when we're going to be concerned about video, you know, the way the word is raised, that's generally, as far as quality of video does appear, we'd have to probably have to change and go to, you know, higher quality or stop motion or frame motion.
Yeah, I think that's just the question to be posed more to staff to see if it's something that's sufficient as it is right now, because the intent behind it is to make sure that there's something that's of enough quality for them to review. And that's the question that I'm hoping to really to staff.
Yeah, let me throw something out. First of all, you can have the highest-grade photography equipment, but if you don't have the proper lighting, it's still going to be green. So what I would recommend is that we have a minimum lighting, security lighting, wherever there's areas being video taped, because that's going to have a worse difference on the quality of video than the actual equipment.
I'm going to go to item A, which is a public hearing. Is there one who would like to speak for or against a specific use permit? Is there anyone, or no one opposed the motion, here, go to item B.
I wanted to ask you something.
Consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading for the mentioned specific use permit. The city attorney, read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance numbers 07-27 of the city of Orleans to issue a specific use permit to Sharon Bigel to allow a bar lounge in general retail GR district located in South Lewis Lane, bearing a legal description of 1.69 acres out of blocks 2 and 3 Lewis subdivision 721, maintain the required off-street parking spaces, 2, providing a licensed security guard in the parking lot during peak hours of operation on Thursday, Friday and Saturday, 9:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. 3, maintain adequate lighting around all bar lounge entries, exits and on-site parking areas, will provide and maintain the surveillance video in the parking lot and must maintain a 30-day retention of the video. 5, providing and maintaining a 6-foot solid fence along the south end of the property provided for the residential use. 6, applicant must obtain and maintain a TABC license and 7, applying to departments administered by the planning building, help fire and police departments, providing complication, ordaining other matters related to folk going. Someone to approve?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Do we want, we want to revise the...
Well, really, at this point, I'm not sure we need to revise it. It's really a question back to staff between now and second reading. If you look at it and it's sufficient the way it stands right now, then I'll fine it up. It's really, it's going to be the PD is going to have to review that. If the event was ever, the situation was ever to arise, you all would need that. I just wanted to make sure y'all had something that's of enough quality for you to utilize.
Okay. I think going forward and making standard for everybody so that we don't have the same issue coming up. We need to standardize a minimum standard for video quality and also make sure that wherever there's a video camera, that there's sufficient lighting. That would basically be...
Chief, may I ask, is there a standard? These guys up here probably...
Well, no, that's okay. I was going to say, actually, there are certain banks that have said that their requirement is that the camera is this good and that it is in fact lit this well. And that's what I'll look up and bring back.
You know, because whatever the rules are.
Yeah, there's some that are really good.
These big systems across the community.
Right, right. Because there are times when somebody turns in the tape and you can't see anything on it and there's nothing more frustrating to everybody involved, so we'll check out.
I think that if you have a well-lit area, you can, you don't have to have this high quality equipment and it works handed him.
Right, right. I'll bring back whatever's, you know, feasible. It doesn't put too much of a burden on everybody. It needs to work.
We definitely, at the minimum, we want lighting for every location of the video or photographs.
I will do it.
That's a minimum.
Okay, I was trying to get your, so that you could, you could give us an answer next time.
I'll be here. Thank you.
Yeah, do me a favor too. We don't need 15 case reports. A couple would have done.
First and second, is there any other discussion? All those members say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like aye. Motion carries. Item 9, consider and take action to approve or reject fire protection service contracts with following cities and an agreed amount to provide fire protection services, COME 61,132, for that, 90,000, 7BA, and Palm Valley, 119,000, 36. She?
Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, what I'm presenting is the annual renewals of the contract for Palm Valley COME for the amounts that the mayor just stated. These numbers are approximately the same as what they were last year, I believe. One of them went down a little bit due to the evaluation by the county appraisal district, but they are about the same. We don't make a whole lot of runs to these areas, but what these numbers include is for the fire service to be available 24/7. So that's what this is. It's not per... what this is. It's not per run, but it's for us to be available for emergency response twenty-four seven. Staff is recommending approval, and I'll answer any questions if there are.
Yes. Question. How were these numbers derived? Is it square footage, or amount of buildings, or...
No, the numbers are arrived, the way the contracts are written is, the numbers are arrived at, and this was done by previous commission, is that they, we go to the Cameron County Appraisal District, and we get their certified appraisals. Not with the one appraisal it, but we wait till they get certified, and, because they do have exemptions in there for the people that are over sixty-five, and protests and stuff. So once they're certified, then the number is ten cents per one hundred on that, which is basically the same rate as the Emergency Service District for the county.
Thank you.
May I make motion to take action to approve the fire protection service contracts?
Certainly.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Exposed, like sign, motion carries. Item ten, presentation regarding the bicycle and pedestrian projects for the city of Harlingen. Now, now.
Good evening. We have a brief presentation of sidewalks and pedestrian bicycle projects in Harlingen. Basically, it's broken into sidewalk projects, safe routes to school, bicycle pedestrian trails, and bicycle pedestrian study by Harlingen San Bernardino M.P.O. In two thousand and three, we did about, not we, I wasn't here, but five miles of a new sidewalk, twenty-eight thousand square yards of existing sidewalk curb ramp repairs. Another project was the Heart of Harlingen Pedestrian Linkage Project, which was funded by Tech Stock. The C Street Sidewalk Project, funded by CDBG grant money.
Can you go back to that previous slide? The blue are the sidewalks from the bond program, and the green is sidewalks in the heart of Harlingen.
Treasure Hills Veterans Way Sidewalk Project. Seventh Street Project, Police Department Sidewalk, downtown curb ramp repairs. The, one of the current projects is the Lincoln Sidewalk Project, which is currently being worked on by Public Works Department. We have about, we need about two more blocks, and we should complete that project. Earlier in the month, we were letting, we were told that we had additional funds for more sidewalks, so we're looking at doing more sidewalks in the area. The Rio Honda Road Thirteenth Street Sidewalk Project, that's a partnering project with the Harlingen Independent School District, and we're going, we're building a sidewalk from Morgan to the new school, and then to Thirteenth, south to Marshall to the high school, and then north from Rio Honda to Benson. That's approximately about forty thousand dollars of project. The school district is providing the materials and supplies, and Public Works is building the sidewalks. The Safe Route to School Project, it's a fairly program by the U.S. Department of Federal Highway Administration, and it's implemented through Tech Stock. We did a, we consulted, we had consultant Albert Aldanian to do the study for us, which is complete. And then we'll present that to Tech Stock for the review. And this is supposed to get kids to walk to school, use their bicycles to, I guess, better their health. And basically, it was broken up into four groups. Group one is Jefferson Elementary, Lamar Elementary, Stewart Place, Gutierrez Middle School, and Vella Middle School. Group two is Bowie Elementary, Copley, Mylum, Sam Houston Elementary, and Treasure Hills Elementary. Group three was Bonham Elementary, Memorial, Travis Elementary, and Vernon Middle School. Group four, Rossen Elementary, Lee Means Elementary, Long Elementary, Savala Elementary. And they'll, like I said, we submit this to Tech Stock for the review, and once the plans are approved, we'll, you know, they'll be available for funding. This is a map of the study of the sidewalks that was determined there was a need for. And Paul Mansis is here to talk about the pedestrian trails and existing trails.
The city, the existing inventory of the city's walking and biking trails in our parks includes just a little over six miles. Rangeville Park, City Lake Soccer Complex, Wilson Sports Complex, Pendleton Park. If you've ever been to any of these places in the evening, you'll see how heavily used they are in the evening times. It also includes the current two-mile stretch of the Arroyo Hike and Bike Trail, which runs from McKelvey, Business Seventy-Seven West, to just north of Bogus Ford, adjacent to Bogus Ford on the expressway. Our future trails are all born out of this document, which the commission approved approximately two years ago, which is the city's hike and bike master plan. We currently have a major project going on, which is the Twenty-Fifth Street Bicycle and Pedestrian Trail, two-point-six million dollar project, eighty percent of it that is funded through federal highway grants, twenty percent from our four B that was ratified by this commission, four and a half miles in length, effectively runs from Ramsey Nature Park north to TSTC, and there's a spur that's west down Jefferson Street, past Bonham Elementary, into the Bogus Stadium Middle School areas.
Is it ultimately that spur of Jefferson just looking up with the city lake?
No, it doesn't. It stops at the stadium, stops at the stadium area. Yes. And that project is going to let, which means it will go to bid in January of next year.
The plan takes it to the lake, but this project doesn't fund that.
This phase of it doesn't. The funding that we have is just to the stadium. Again, this is the project. This is actually tilted on its side, north being to your right. You can see the proposed project. This is Ramsey. This is Twenty-Fifth Street, and this is where it ends, at the pedestrian mall at TSTC. This is the west spur over to the stadium area. Actually, you'll be considering the railroad crossing agreements for this area later in the agenda. The two future projects that we consider high priority, that we'll actually discuss a little bit further, are, once we have the Twenty-Fifth Street Trail Project in, which again is from Hugh Ramsey Nature Park up to TSTC, again, we already have the two-mile section between McKelvey and Bogus, so the most logical connection would be between McKelvey and Ramsey to make that long connection. That would mean we would have a continuous trail from TSTC all the way around to Expressway Seventy-Seven. The second high priority project would be to extend what we have, the termination point just adjacent to Bogus, Bogus Ford on the expressway, all the way out to and around the reservoir, Dixieland Reservoir and Dixieland Park. And again, we'll talk a little bit more about those in a little bit. Currently, the Harlingen San Bernardino Metropolitan Planning Organization is doing a, an area-wide bicycle pedestrian study for its service area, which is basically every place in northern Cameron County, not including Brownsville. Our Trails Master Plan, which I showed you, has been incorporated into the draft, so everything will match up. And they're going through the, the public comment phase of that right now.
Well, that's all we have. Do you have any questions?
Or any other questions?
Have we figured out how we're gonna acquire right-of-way or property along that proposed link between McKelvey and Ramsey Nature Park? It seems like that got shut down because of the private property.
We have not. It looks like there is one single piece that goes all the way to, to the water that we would need to, to look at. But no, we have not at this point.
But we'll get to that bridge when we get...
Exactly. Pun intended, yes.
Okay, it could be, it could be the answer, right? Couple bridges?
We actually talked about that.
Any other, any other questions? Lot to be proud of there. A lot of markets been done, a lot of good, a lot of good assets for citizens to be able to use for that. Right? I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on now to the item twenty-eight, which is closed executive session, because we've got some standing bystanders that I need to talk to about one of these items. And that's, we'll go ahead and do both of them. Closed executive session regarding the following items, chapter one, subchapter D, DCA Government Code, Section I five, one, one oh seven one, Constitution and Assistant City Attorney seek legal advice regarding legal issues related to changes in consulting agreement between the city of Harlingen, David Sibley, Mike Millsam, and Sun Valley Motel located in nineteen hundred South Seventy-Seven, Sunshine Strip. Ladies and gentlemen, the city commission is gonna move into the room in the back to discuss the items in executive session. Oh, and a motion, motion. I think it was second. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have to have the city engineer back up here. Gonna go to item thirteen eleven. Consider take action to last happen, early close East Austin Avenue between North Business Seventy-Seven and Thirteenth Street for traffic safety. Did you get the title we came up?
Staff is requesting to permanently close a section of East Austin Avenue between North Business Seventy-Seven and Thirteenth Street to improve safety in the area. We did request a crash report in the area, and there was nine wrecks or crashes within a twenty-four month period in the area. And due to potential high volume of traffic in the area, we would recommend that we close this section aroma.
However, it's one of my favorite shortcuts in this city, without being buried.
I'd like to help against that.
Okay. All right, come on, come on up.
Curtis Potter. I live at eighteen eighteen North Seventeenth Street. I go through this intersection on a daily basis, going to and from downtown and home, going to the HEB grocery store. This intersection has been like this since at least about fifty-four, fifty-seven, sixty years. And I go through there on a daily basis, a couple of times a day, and I'm, you're gonna make a real problem for those that are coming from the east or from the west. They gotta make a turn to get to the light, and they gotta make a turn to, onto Thirteenth and back on to Austin to go to HEB. When they come back, they've gotta come back off of Austin, they've gotta make a turn to get into the far right-hand lane in order to make the turn onto Sunshine, to make the turn on to Austin to go back home. And it, I go through there, as I say, once or twice a day. I've not seen any wrecks. I think y'all leave it alone, because I think you're gonna inconvenience the public more by closing that than you are by leaving more by, so I would urge you not to close it.
What prompted the snap to make this recommendation? Was there anything in particular that prompted it?
The people that are coming, that are going north, they just go, they need to cross, what, one, two, three, four, like five, five lanes of traffic. And they just make a run for it, north.
Did they get terror complaints from within the area?
And, yeah, we did talk to the out of zone right there, and they were kinda glad, because they see a lot of accidents that happen in that intersection.
Isn't there a Tech Stock requirement for a minimum distance between intersections? Like where this intersection is at, if you were to do a new road or develop it, you probably couldn't replicate this situation here, could you?
No.
Is Tech Stock's gonna make you spread out your intersections?
Usually, they do, and they also wanna come in perpendicular to the main road. In this case, we did consult with Tech Stock, and they didn't see any issues with us closing that road here.
But here's, I've got a question, because I don't know so much as far as the volume of coming west to east, and I think I have legitimate concern coming across all the lanes of traffic. But you've got Austin Street on both sides of that that have already been established there, and you've got a traffic flow going back and forth from the, and that's what I noticed on the overview map, that if we were to close that one section off, won't that create another issue with that little zigzag kind of, if people continue their, their traffic patterns through there, coming from Austin onto Thirteenth, they're gonna have to take a quick left, and then another quick right to continue west?
They would still back up, because that section of Austin is very short. I mean, you'd have people backing up to the other side of Austin as well.
And the angle of, of that, that crossing there is such that when you pull out there, you have a heck of a time seeing traffic coming from the south on northbound lanes. And so I think that's what's created some of the accidents that occurred out there. We've also had complaints from the property owners that live on Austin about folks cutting across there at a high rate of speed and going through that school zone. And we have letters that the city manager and I have received about the concerns.
I've had some requests that we put speed bumps there, but we can't do it on Austin because it's a main road.
It's a collector. And so we talked, we talked to Tech Stock about doing this, and they said, yes, by all means, you can close it.
But that, that question I had about that, that's taken into consideration? You've sort of looked at that, and there's not gonna be any, getting rid of one issue creating another?
Timing of the lights, would that be changed, or something that can happen?
And we control that.
Yeah, I looked at it yesterday. I wondered whether or not at certain times of the day you might need a left-hand turn signal, or something like that, because a lot of, because if you...
That we had a left-hand turn signal.
I go, I go down that street every day to, or to church, to Treasure Store. So it's, you know, you can think, you know, and I'm ambivalent about the request. My, my concern is that when you close, this is, this is something we're just doing, and we're not getting much public input. And when we, after we do it, I guarantee you, there're gonna be a hundred people that are gonna show up here one night and complain about it. Now, we can do, I mean, we can do that, and we can fade the heat, but I believe there will be a lot of people come and tell us things that we haven't heard before. One of the things that, you know, the school buses come, you know, from the high school, and they turn, and they use that as a cut through. They don't have to make a, you know, a turn that's more like a hundred and eighty degree turn.
I think they use ground, but I think it'd be safer. If we get rid of this, that's...
They would have the traffic light, Mayor, and I think it would be a little safer for them.
I have a question.
Maybe, just wondering if we talked to...
Nine accidents in twenty-four months, is that a continuation pattern? Is it getting worse? Is it getting better over previous twenty-four month cycles? And then part two is, what is the traffic count on those streets around there? It's kind of a huge expansion that's causing this.
North Seventy-Seven, minor arterial with a capacity five thousand to thirty thousand. The major collectors, which is Austin, has one thousand to fifteen thousand vehicles per day.
So is nine accidents, I guess it's a cheaper question, too. Is nine accidents in the twenty-four month period a danger signal to you? I mean, are there worse intersections in the city? Or there, obviously, there's other intersections, but are there worse intersections?
Well, Tech Stock, when they make a decision on that, they base it on the accident data, and they won't put out like a light or a street light until they have that data, because something happens.
Correct.
So if they're already saying yes, they could turn it.
How does, how does that, this location right here compare to the crossover there at Seventy-Seven and Commerce, there in front of the Valley Morning Star? I know historically there's been quite a few accidents there because of that crossover. just by the nature of the fact that there's, um, the flow of traffic sort of verging on another, another major street? Do you, do you have any comparative data about that?
Uh, no.
No.
Is this people coming from the east across, uh, to, like towards the HEB parking lot on the north side?
Right, or they actually, they come from, like from Commerce, uh, onto, verging onto Seventy-Seven?
We have a couple of other areas in town too, Matt's New Combs, that's another area that we need to look at.
Maybe the, the other option that we actually talked about it is, we're currently undergoing a thorough plan, and there's something that we can, we can talk to them about and go through that process, uh, before coming back to the commission.
Let me ask this, uh, could we, would there be an opportunity to put a designated right-hand turning lane, so that, uh, that traffic could flow through around that new corner? Because typically, people aren't gonna make that right-hand turn with the existing shortcut, so nobody's ever gonna make that turn, but if we added a designated turning lane?
We could, we could make that central lane a, uh.
Cut that off and then make it a designated, and then that way, and put a yield sign, and that way people don't necessarily have to wait for the light.
Is there currently a stop sign or yield sign there?
It's a traffic light.
The stop sign, yes, and that, yes.
There's a stop sign.
Yes.
I think that traffic would, I think if you put a designated turning lane, a right-hand turning lane coming down Thirteenth Street going south, the traffic would actually coming off of Thirteenth would flow better than the way it is now, because right now you don't have a designated turning lane. And if you wanna go, if you wanna go north on Business Seventy-Seven, you can't do it, you have to wait for traffic. Was there a vitality twenty-three required to that twenty-four month on that?
I'm not sure. We only asked for the previous twenty-four months.
I think there was a fatality in that.
And, you know, this, we're bringing this forward because we had those concerns from the residents that live on Austin. So we said, well, we'll bring it forward. We talked to text dot, and we've actually been talking about closing this for about two and a half years. We just never went through with it, or brought it before the city council.
When you say the residents on Austin, you're talking by the, is that the Methodist Church here in St. Albans?
Between Thirteenth and Morgan.
And I can, I'll confirm that, because I've got residents on there.
Yes, sir.
I did, I do, I did do a speed bump, uh, walk over there for petition signatures, and they are for speed bumps to slow down the traffic, and I think that would, that would have.
And the spokesperson for that group is, is someone who's contacting us about closing this area. She feels that people cutting across there just gain momentum, just keep going straight through Austin. So we thought we'd bring it before city council. We talked to the AutoZone there in the corner, they're all for it, they've seen accidents, uh, they feel like it would be a positive thing to close it down, uh, and they're right there in the corner. We talked to text dot, and they said, by all means, close it. So we thought we'd bring it before, uh, this commission and help see what you guys want to do.
Have you guys explored all other alternatives to this, the concerns there? Like even maybe to include a median, I know that's, that's Seventy-Seven, right? So that'd be stated after text dot would approve and consider maybe even a median there to sort of stop that, that crossover traffic, let that go on on Morgan.
But we, we wouldn't strike that, we would actually construct a median.
Are, are you talking about in the middle of Seventy-Seven? Like a directional line?
Before getting to the turning lanes there at Thirteenth, has consideration been made instead of having to close that one? Because at least that way you're addressing the one major concern you're talking about, which is, and it's a legitimate one, the, the traffic having to come across, so multiple lanes of traffic. But yet you still allow for the westbound traffic off of Austin to have the availability of that crossover. 'Cause I think, I, I just, I mean, you, you guys would end up being our experts here than anybody else, than me, but I'm just sort of trying to think of alternatives. I think maybe where it's a little bit too soon to make that decision yet, have, have we looked at that? I'm just asking.
Uh, no. We could, I mean, we could look into it, see what other, uh, but that is text dot right away.
Thirteenth Street. We, we, we can bring, we can bring other options.
Might be, table it, Mayor.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like.
This was the easiest and least expensive option to deal with this issue.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we table this, but I'd like the staff to go back and see what kind of participation we can get financially out of text dot to open a turning lane up, because if you close it off, I think we're gonna create more problems turning, so I'm, I'm just gonna make the motion that we table it.
I'll say it.
All those members say aye.
Aye.
Motion here is, right, thank you. Item twelve, consider take action to approve this second. A project to submit to the Texas Department of Transportation for consideration of the Texas Department of Transportation Enhancement Program two thousand twelve authorized to establish a grant application, and let's take item fifteen up with it, which is kind of a companion.
No.
Consider take action to approve and adopt a resolution authorizing the spittle of an application to the Texas Department of Transportation. Request reimbursement funding to build the county park to Ramsey Danger Center connection at Dixon and Park extension to the city's existing bicycle pedestrian trail system.
Tim, let's. Sir. Could you go ahead and discuss?
There's a motion, a second. Is there a go ahead?
Thank you, Mayor. Text dot put out a, the two thousand twelve Transportation Enhancement Grant Program, and basically it's an eighty-twenty grant program. They reimburse up to eighty percent of construction costs for any qualified project. And there are several projects that can qualify for these grants, uh, one being beautification projects along roadways, others being improvements to historic structures, hiking bike trails, et cetera. Staff put a list of, uh, projects together that we wanna submit for beautification projects along, uh, the expressway. Now, again, this is an eighty-twenty, uh, grant program. They, they reimburse eighty percent, we have to cover twenty percent. The, the grant does not cover any engineering fees, any consultant fees, or environmental fees. All those have to be paid for by the entity who's getting the grant. Uh, and also, uh, text dot has a deadline for submission of this grant by November the sixteenth. So we are on a very tight timeline to get these packets done and submitted. We really didn't have too many projects ready to submit, so we created these in a hurry. So we'll go through these, and hopefully you'll like what you see. Uh, we have a couple of options, we have three options we wanna present to the commission for beautification. Option one would be to use pavers and artificial turf on several expressway overpasses and expressway entrances. Dixon and Harrison, I'm sorry, Dixon and Harrison Tyler and Expressway Eighty-Three. Uh, we're looking at a cost of three point five million for that. And again, that's to use pavers and artificial turf, and I'll show you the map in just a sec. The other one will be Lincoln and Expressway Eighty-Three at a cost of one point four million, Ed Carey and Expressway Eighty-Three at seven hundred eighty thousand, and Spur Fifty-Four and Expressway Seventy-Seven, and several city traffic medians. Uh, some of the medians include Washington, uh, street median, Seventy-Seven and Commerce, uh, Twenty-Fifth Street and Harrison. And the total cost for all the projects, seven million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand. The twenty percent match the city would have to come up with is one point four million. Uh, one of the things that I forgot to mention also is that we have to fund all these improvements upfront and get reimbursed as we go along. Okay? So all these together is seven point three million, uh, one point four million is our match. Uh, this does not include any engineering fees. I have asked our city engineer and his staff if they could take it on themselves. They said, sure, why not? Do anything. So, uh, we'll, we'll go through option one, if you can, go through the next one, Charlie.
Before you do that.
Sure.
So we would have to spend seven million to get back five million?
I think it's a revolving type situation where.
Question, can you do one project and then get their portions and then apply that?
Yes, sir. I, I, I think we, we throw the million dol, million dollars, and we do so much of the project, ask for reimbursement, then replenish the fund, and just keep going. And what we're doing, I, I don't know how to use a pointer, so I'm just gonna walk over here. What, what we did was we combined artificial turf, that's the grain, with about twenty to thirty feet of pavers. And I like to take these pavers also and run a border this way and this way, um, and create kind of a, a situation where you're, you're, you've got a border of nothing but pavers and artificial turf in between.
Is there like after, uh, artificial grass?
Artificial grass.
Obviously, you.
And I'll show you an example.
Somebody else is doing this, right?
And I'm gonna show you an example in just a second. Can, can you go to the next one, please? Uh, this is Harrison Tyler and Expressway Seventy-Seven, and you can see we're, we're covering a lot of area here. This is the long expressway, Tyler and Harrison. You've got that large area that always looks really bad, no grass growing, because we don't have any irrigation out there. So we, we like to go ahead and, and do the pavers and the artificial grass, and also we wanna do the LED lights, accent lights under the overpasses, to reflect down on the columns, make it look nice when people come into town. And we're only covering certain areas, as you can see, because where you come off or get back on the expressway, we want it to be nicer for folks when they come into town.
You could get some of that for the soccer conference.
Well, let, let's talk about it, you first. Let's go to the next one, Charlie. Uh, this is Lin, sorry, it's too fast for me. This is Lincoln, and again, we're not covering the entire area on the overpass. I think this will help in a couple of ways. Right now, you also have a lot of bags and trash and debris that get caught up in that grass or the little shrubs. I think this will help limit some of that, because there's nothing to catch on. It should be a surface where the trash would move on to other areas. Uh, next one, Charlie. This is Ed Carey and Expressway, again, it's not the entire area, just certain portions of it, and there is a border of, uh, pavers. Next one. And this is Spur Fifty-Four and Expressway, this is where Bass Pro's shop's at. Next one. These are the traffic islands at Washington and Business Seventy-Seven, over there by the McDonald's. Uh, there are a lot of traffic islands out there, and I think this looks really nice if we did it this way. Couple of things, you won't have irrigation, so you won't have to pay for irrigation anymore, and maintenance is limited, but we're not going out there mowing it. And the ash, and the artificial turf. Sorry.
Currently, are there trees there?
They're palm trees, and we will leave those. We would not take the palm trees out. The, the life expectancy of the artificial turf when non-traffic areas, ten to twenty years.
Is there, is there an issue with that? Somebody pulling it up?
The grass?
Yeah, the turf. I mean, it's not like it's bogus dating where you're.
It's actually anchored, but I guess if you really wanted to, and I'm saying this publicly, you could take it up.
My question was earlier, is that, I mean, obviously there's other cities that are doing this?
What?
No.
Las Vegas, and I'll show that in just a minute. Can you keep going? Uh, Business Seventy-Seven and Commerce, you have a lot of traffic islands out there where the HEBs at and Valley Morning Star.
But once again, the trees would.
Trees remain, we would just encompass the trees into a type of, uh, landscape scenario. Next one, Charlie. This is Twenty-Fifth Street and FM one oh six, which is Tyler and Harrison. That island looks really bad, uh, we need to do something with that island either way. But this would work really well. The other thing about the artificial turf is that it also qualifies, we believe it qualifies for low-impact development, so we, we may be able to submit for grants for low-impact development also. Next one.
But then, I think there's some other spots, like Commerce and North Seventy-Seven, Sunshine Strip, out in that area, there's an island by the railroad track, and you can't forget about F Street, because F Street's the main corridor coming in.
Well, and, and F Street, we put pavers throughout the entire area, that, that little island, is there?
Corner there, and then maybe beautifying the canal areas a little bit more.
Yeah, and another question I had was, the, the areas that are here, they're, they're the same areas in options one, two, and three, right?
Yes, it's all the same, just different variations.
Did we give any consideration to, I, I think one of the important areas that we're trying to emphasize is the gateways into the city, you know, the north side of town there where, um, you get off of Seventy-Seven, coming to Grumeta Road in the loop?
The gateway sign?
Well, there's that, but I'm saying the medians, there may not be a big project there, but those medians there, it's the first thing that people see when they get off the expressway coming into our city.
We, we can add any that the city commission wants.
I'm, I'm just saying the scope of that is, is relatively small, but it would have a big impression of people coming in, because every time I come from out of town coming in, that's a really ugly center area, because there's no, no irrigation, same issues you're having everywhere else.
And text dot is, is already, I mean, one of the triad of.
I, I brought this to their, I brought this to their attention, they said, you know, no one's ever done this before. And, uh, and they're, they are very interested in seeing if this goes through and what it comes out to, because they, they told me, what, this is their words, that if it turns out to be nice and it works out, we'd, we'd like to take credit for it and, and use it in other places.
Then you gotta explain to the commission, this is a competitive grant.
It is a competitive grant.
Everybody in the state is going out with money.
Seventy million dollars, that's all that's available.
Not that much money in the pot. Seven million dollars.
Seventy.
Seventy. Statewide, and it's very competitive, so.
And what you're looking at, what you're looking at here is actually the Las Vegas Strip, uh, Las Vegas Boulevard, and that is artificial grass.
So did you go out there to take that picture?
Yes, sir, I did.
Company.
I, I go to extreme to sacrifice for the city. But, and, and in two thousand and two, I was in Vegas, and I was wondering how they got it so perfectly molded, and this is true. I ran across, and I, and it wouldn't come up.
You tell me. Yeah, that's what I'm worried about, I'm worried about people doing.
But, but no, commission, but it wouldn't come up. And, and so I called last week to Clark County, and I asked her, and the lady I was talking to, who had the, who deals with all the maintenance, she goes, I don't think it is. I said, could I ask, is, is it artificial? And they goes, I don't think it is. I, we have people that maintain it, okay. She goes, but let me verify that. She came back on the phone five minutes later, she goes, it's all artificial. It's all fake.
So what, uh, your, your estimates are based on?
The price per square foot. We contacted the vendor for the product, and we got a price per square foot for pavers and for artificial turf. And again, this is just a combination of both. Uh, now, we can add any areas as you like. Uh, we added about forty thousand dollars per lane, per overpass for, for LED lights, uh, and that's a rough number. Again, we're trying to put this together really quickly, um, and, uh, you know, these numbers maybe need to be tweaked, uh, before we submit the grant application, but we wanted to bring them forward to the city council. And what we'd like to do, if, we wanna submit them all, fantastic, we wanna add to it, great. We'd like to know what option, whether the, the pavers and turf option, or, next one. Or move on to just pavers. This is the cost for just pavers for the same areas, seven point four million, our match is about the same. The cost is about the same per square foot for pavers and for the artificial accommodation.
Question about the artificial turf, so how's the shelf life of ten, twenty years, depending on all the elements and the ozone, et cetera, then what? What, what do we do then?
Replace it. Replace it.
And do we just, in ten or twenty years, look for money, or do we put a sinking fund to replace the after turf?
It might be another bond program to replace it.
What does that compare with, like?
But that's all, but that, that's, this is gonna be text dot. It's all text dot.
It's all, it's all text, but once we do this, Mayor, we, 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 we'll have to, we'll have to take care of it. It's gonna be obvious.
Maintenance involved is just like.
Well, to, to a certain degree, they, they call it sweeping. Every now and then you have to go out there and sweep it and fluff it back up.
That, that's another question, that's, uh, surely they have premium grade turf and.
Yes, sir. And the prices we're, we're quoting are, is a very good artificial turf.
And I'm sure the company probably has done some of it, they, they've done.
We talked to the companies that do it for, for Las Vegas, and we talked to several other companies, there's companies here in Austin that do it. Uh, several folks are using it for their homes, uh, because it limits the, you don't have to water it.
Water it, yeah.
You don't have to maintain it, and it looks nice year-round.
Well, that's why they're doing it in Vegas, because they don't, they don't have water in them.
That's exactly right.
Can you find out about the anchoring system?
Sure, that, it, it, we, I talked to the vendor, there, there is an anchoring system, but it's just, it's more of a, of a spike-type system where you drive spikes in into the aggregate, there's an aggregate underneath the turf, uh, and you spike it in there. But if somebody wanted to, they could go out, go out there and grab a piece of equipment and try to tug on it, and it may come up.
Can you say if they make some for political signs, or they?
Pull it up. Okay, next one, Charlie, I'll just go through this quickly. Next one, Charlie. Uh, just, this is all pavers, same areas, just pavers, so it's all red. Next one, same thing. Keep going.
Yeah, and how does it compare as far as the life expectancy or the usage of, of that turf versus pavers?
Well, pavers, of course, is gonna last longer. And, um, pavers, you have no maintenance.
Well, I mean, you do.
I mean, it, it, because you're on a, most of these are on slopes, and so you're, you're And so you're, you're not gonna get the settlement that you would on a flat area. On some of these flat areas, like these, yeah, you may have some settlement where you have to reset these. But you can pull them off and reset them, just like we did at Goodie Ellis Park.
They'll make a partner on the pavers.
I'm sorry? Well, on the allied, on the, on the low-impact development, um, the task force has told us that they have about three truckloads of pavers from another project that they did. They may be able to contribute to our medians, not for the expressway, but for the medians in town. So we thought about incorporating those.
Can you do one other thing, check with the manufacturer and see how that aggregate and the grass holds up to long-term subversion? In case it's flooded, you know, we get a flood here.
Okay.
Think about running against them then?
It, it might eventually, but if it does, I'd like to know how that's gonna hold up.
Okay. Uh, next one, Charlie. Next one.
Dan, what you're asking us is to pick one of the four options?
One of the three options.
One of the three?
Yeah, and, and then, within the, each option, if you want to just pick one or two of the listed projects. Or you want to submit them all, or you want to add to it, you want to take away from it, whatever you'd like us to do. Uh, this option is for landscaping. This is all landscaping, putting in shrubs, putting in trees, putting in, to certain parts of the same areas. And we're looking at about twelve point seven million, and our match would be two point five million.
So, so where do we get a million and two million dollars to do this?
Well, we, we'd have to-
We will have to look at several options.
Several options.
Or B probably would be one of the more likely options.
You can go through this pretty quickly, Charlie.
Yeah, and then, and if you submit them, if you submit them all as, we submit it as a package, or we submit them as individual options, so that they might-
We would submit these as a packet or as individual projects, however the Commission wishes to pursue.
I guess I'm wondering if it would be beneficial to-
Make them small?
Well, yeah, so that they might, if they don't want to give us all of that money, they might give us part of the money to do two of the projects instead of four of them or five of the projects. But, you know, it is sort of innovative, and we do have a partner with paper, with, with some of the bricks and, uh, to leverage.
One of the other things-
I think it improves our, I think, if, if they like it, 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 it might improve our chances of getting some of the money. And we would look, we would just look to the-
Dan, are you adding the, the extension of the hike and bike trail also?
And that's what I was just gonna mention, Mayor. Paul's gonna talk about, and, and another grant for the same thing, for an enhancement grant, for to extend the hike and bike trails. Now, once he finishes with his presentation, we're also gonna have to rank, the City Council's gonna have to rank which one is priority. Which option we want to go with, what areas do we want to do, and then what do we want to do hike and bike trails, and we want to submit them. And then of all the projects that we want to submit, which is priority one, two, three, and four, we have to rank them, or it takes time, we're not accepted. So, we're gonna have to ask the City Council, of the options that we picked, and the projects that we picked, including the hike and bike trail, and I'll let Paul talk about that. Uh, we're gonna have to rank them, one through five, one through two, one, whatever you'd like us to do.
So all of that comes from the same source of money?
Yes, and, and tomorrow, we have to go before the MPO and ask for a letter of support for whatever projects we select. We're already on the agenda, so we're just trying to get direction from the City Council, do we want to move forward with this? We know it's a lot of money, and we know it's a short timeline. This program call came out last week, and we were told November sixteenth is your deadline, and that's all the time you have. So, I'll let Paul talk about the hike and bike.
Again, I'm not gonna repeat, obviously, what the Assistant City Mayor described being the project. Uh, we have two, um, projects that are in our adopted Trails Master Plan. That was the document that I held up to you earlier. And so we do have a plan in place that describes high-priority projects. Again, we have an existing two-mile section of the Arroyo hike and bike trail that runs between McKelvey Park, all the way out to adjacent to Bogus Ford at the expressway. The two adjacent high-priority projects in that plan would be to make the connection between McKelvey east to Ramsey Nature Park. And again, Ramsey Nature Park is the southern terminus of the, the current Twenty Fifth Street hike and bike trail that's going to go up to, to TSTC. So that would be, obviously, making that connection between the two would be a logical, uh, would be a logical high-priority project. The second one, again, would be to extend where we are now, adjacent to Bogus Ford at the expressway, west to the reservoir and make a loop around Dixieland Park. The McKelvey to Ramsey section is about a mile. We would need to go under the bridge, um, at four ninety-nine and get to the other side, and then come up to Hugh Ramsey. The estimated total cost of that is about seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and the frontage to Dixieland section, just short of three miles and just under two million dollars. And I have the, actually, the twenty percent of those costs is in your, your packet. I failed to put that on the screen. I believe it's right around five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars would be our match for both of those projects together. If you decided to go each separate project, it would be proportionate to that.
Does that include the year income?
Yes, it does. It does.
I'd just like to point out that the last time that, that stretch, I mean, I'd hate to, I'd hate to prioritize that high, and then it's something else that had more potential to actually go through. So I'd rather not make that McKelvey to Ramsey the highest priority, because I don't want to bump anything out if we get to the roadblocks there.
You all may not be aware, but we actually had the funding, we had the funding to do the McKelvey to Ramsey section. And, but the, the residents, uh, you know, protested, and the Commission backed down and didn't do it. Maybe also, it was one of the things that, uh, was, one of the reasons why the Parks Bond issue failed in two thousand and three, because of the opposition to that project within the, within it. So I, I agree with Commissioner Lech, which I'm-
I think the logical-
I don't want to bet on that one, because we bet on that one once before, and we, and we lost.
The logical would be along Tony Butler, it's all city-owned property, and the reservoir and, and Dixieland.
A continually a westward that-
That'd be logical right now, and hopefully, the country get that connection. And put the beautification on the corridor planning, like we've talked about, and put that on the four, four B program, and just consider doing that. Beautification and continue to hike and bike is the priority.
Are you talking about utilizing this match as well?
Well, that match-
Any four B money?
For textile, because beautification really, if you look at textile grants, you don't get many of them. They don't rank that high. Well, hike and bike trails, I rank a little bit higher.
I'd like to make sure that we sustain a high leverage with any four B money, so we use it as a bike pursuit match to go along with any of that.
So, the options for the beautification, we have three options.
You gotta lay it out for us, you know, we're-
And, uh, it, it does require cash on hand to do these projects. I, I wanna keep pointing that out, because we go to the four B, we will have to have cash on hand to be able to get a revolving dollar amount to get these things out.
Well, here, here's how I would, let me suggest, let me suggest this. I think, you know, I, I, I think we ought to take a shot at the Tyler Harrison Dixieland project. Something we've been talking about, that we, you know, as, as that retail area develops, and is developing, and more things are happening out there, we should, we gotta do something to clean it up. It looks bad. I put that as number one, and if we want to put the Dixieland section of the Parks Project as number two, and then rank the other three, our staff, that's whatever. But we're, we're gonna have to do something about-
Tyler Harrison at number one?
Well, I think, I think that-
I'm just, I'm throwing that out as, for discussion.
Yeah, and I, I just want to say that that's one area that we're, we're, we're doing a, we're killing a few birds with one stone, because we're cleaning it up. Plus, we're saving ourselves in the long run on maintenance, mowing and whatever else. So I think that's kind of a no-brainer, that area that Mayor Blahle mentioned. We spent a lot of money-
And that's the area everybody sees when they come into town. No matter what direction you're coming from, that's the area that's gonna hit you.
You know, you have to think, too, that's wherever it comes in, basically.
Now, do you want to do all pavers? We want, if, if we, I will say that we do landscaping. We don't have any plans done for landscaping. We would have to hire an architect, which is gonna add the cost, because we don't-
I like the idea of the option two, as far as-
Just pavers?
That, that would be my suggestion. I think that's a, I mean, that'll last longer, do you think it's a-
I think we can mix in some green, so smaller areas and-
Planters?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure Steve Walker has some good ideas with textile, and that's-
We actually, we actually presented it to him with planters.
Right.
And just small trees. We don't want anything that's gonna catch too many bags.
He's meticulous about that, so, I mean, I think he-
Can I have a landscaping program in there?
So, so pavers and the options.
Nobody likes, nobody likes artificial greens.
No, I, I, I support that.
Personally, I think it looks fantastic. And no, and no one's ever done it before.
And especially around some of the monuments, the welcoming signage.
And that's why we want to create the border with the pavers, to make it look realistic.
Maybe since it's, it's innovative and different, that might give us a more favorable review.
It got Mario Horca's attention, so, whatever that means, uh, I don't know. We'll see.
That's why, that, that's why I'm kinda leaning towards at least mixing some of that in, because I think it is, it is innovative, it's something different. And it might, it might rise, make that project rise to the top.
And if, and if it doesn't turn out right, you know, it was Paul's idea. Just wanna point that out.
Oh, is he in Vegas with you when you took that?
Well, let's go back to the options so that the-
Can we do that?
So that the, the Commission can signify the, the priority.
Before that.
Option one is for pavers and artificial turf. And we can pick all of them, or just pluck a few of them out, or add to it. We, I like the, personally, I like the idea of the medians throughout town, because they look bad.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry?
Dixieland Spur Fifty Four?
Dixieland Spur Fifty Four?
Okay, it'd be option one, Dixieland, uh, first Tyler's number one, and then number two's Spur Fifty Four, you want?
I, I think we should mine them, like, might work a little better.
Combine that whole area?
Well, he's got it on there twice, though.
Okay.
Put those two together as one?
Yeah, and the other one can, you've got city medians, so.
We, we could, we could try to work that in somehow later. It does not have to be on a textile system, it can be in, in town also, so. We, we want to just do the medians and the Dixieland Harrison Tyler. We'll make that as one project, and that'll be priority number one. Is that okay? And do we want to add any hike and bike trails, the extension to Dixieland?
The extension of Dixieland's gonna be easy, because it's Tony Butler, of course.
The family that's number two, Dixieland extension is the second priority.
Okay. And we'll, we'll present both of these to the MPO tomorrow, and get a letter of support. Okay?
I would like to ask a question.
Do we want to vote on it, or?
Okay, what's your question?
My question is that you all have discussed the length, how long it would last. You have discussed the water issue, but how about fire?
Artificial turf doesn't burn?
Doesn't burn ever. Okay.
This fire return.
Okay. All right, do we have enough information?
Yes, we want to vote on it, that way, get a consensus, and we can-
Make that part of your motion. What we just gave you.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I meant, I meant my pretty well.
So, to include Spur Fifty Four and Expressway Seventy Seven, and Tyler and Harrison as-
Expressway Thirty Seven includes Spur Fifty Four and Expressway Seventy Seven.
With pavers and artificial turf.
With a combination of pavers and artificial-
And we can, and because the cost is about the same, we can widen the amount of pavers and just limit the amount of artificial turf. Okay.
All right, I'll second it.
And then also, the second one would be the hike and bike trail.
To the Dixieland extension, yes, sir.
And option two being the hike and bike trail to Dixieland from Tunval.
Right, all those pavers say aye.
Aye, thank you.
All right, well, that, that took care of both items twelve and fifteen, then, and so we go, I'm gonna ask to go to item twenty-four, just consider it a hack to approve about a resolution by Department of City Commission supporting the establishment of a community revitalization plan for upgrading the colonial area, redevelopment of commercial property within the planned area specified in the resolution, and support to provide affordable housing within the planned area.
Good evening. Um, in your agenda packets, you have two resolutions. One, we're submitted by the developer, which provides for the designation of a community revitalization plan for the area that's designated. Um, the second one was drafted in response to that plan, being that, uh, the application process completely states that if you're going to identify this community revitalization plan, you have to go out, and you have to have public hearings, and you have to assess all of the needs in the community in that area. You're gonna look at the education, you're gonna look at crime reports, you're gonna look at housing stock, you're gonna look at, um, the needs for the, all of the area. Unfortunately, the area that's submitted to, um, the city for this area, half of it is outside of the city limits. So you wouldn't be able to designate the entire area as a community plan. In addition to that, um, it would be a cost to the city, and that you would have to have staff to go out and get the plan together. It's required that you have this plan, and you've identified all of the needs in that area, you've looked at the economic factors, and you have identified some of the funding sources that you're going to use to address all of the needs. And that would have to be done by the January eighth, the middle of the pre-application. The other option would be to submit the resolution that you have, that just is a support of the application of the hundred and twenty-five, uh, single-family residential units that will be constructed there. The developer is here, if you'd like to speak to him, if you have any questions.
Is it a tax credit?
It's a tax credit.
And do you have a map to show the people?
I didn't, um, I submitted a map, but I see that it didn't get in the agenda packet. I think, let me show you what he has.
I mean, it would be good for the public to see what the topic is.
We only have a-
Is it that fatal subdivision out there, uh, west of- West of Tom Wilson Sports Complex?
Yes, yes, exactly what it is.
Where I took, where I took my daughter, that daughter, how to drive, of course, she got her license.
Is that what ends the fence?
Well, it's pretty cool, because there are obstacles, you know, in the streets, dumping.
And the fence broke?
But they wanted, we were requiring another entrance, or something like that.
Oh, no, no, that was a little side.
So, only half the subdivisions in the city.
The city limits goes just like this. So if you can see this in the yellow, this is the city limit line, it goes just like that.
Would they be interested in a voluntary annexation?
Well, they're in, the site where the-
The site is in, but the area around it where the revitalization is supposed to take place in the colonias are outside the city.
So you would look at the area, and does it need, does this area need to be revitalized, and what are the resources, and then what is the criteria that you use to do that? And are there areas perhaps in the city limits of origin that are in more need of revitalization? You would kind of have to look at it balanced. That's why.
Gonna try to, that's gonna be a damn one.
You can go ahead and show, yeah.
It's old steel.
Here's a city limit map, let me show you. So the property, this is the property that is in the city limits. All the other area is outside of the city.
So let's to the right, and that's to, to the right.
So let's, do we go across the park, the school, and the park?
Yeah, all that, and that area.
All, all the-
Tom Wilson Sports Park and-
It's in, uh-huh.
Well, uh, what happens if we, I mean, I know that there are other, uh, votes that are interested in applying, getting a resolution from the city in support of their, uh, project, their low, their-
Tax credit.
Tax credit project. What, uh, if we favor, I mean, is this favoring one or the other, or if we, if we support both, do they have less of a chance? Or what happens if we support more than one?
You would, you can support more than one. For this specific point, I think- You would, you can support more than one. For this specific point, I think you get six points. However, it would make sense that if you're going to designate an area as an area that needs community revitalization, that you've actually looked at the area and deemed that it does need revitalization, and the criteria is there to support it. In addition to that, the, the other applicants, the, the notice doesn't come out until December seventeen, so the pre-application is due January eighth, and March first is the application date. So there may be other ones that are going to be submitting.
We need to partner with the county to do this then, or since that other area is in the county, can they step up and say, hey, this, we wanna partner with you and have this county revitalization approved?
I think that if that were to happen, both communities, both the county and the city would have to do a resolution. But that may be something that needs to be looked at, looking at it as a whole, because on the east, it's not such a economically distressed as it is on the west side of this property. And there's colonias that are on the other, that are in the county.
It looks like they're both on either side of this development, the colonias.
I agree. The other point too is, how many organizations have we supported for tax credits over the last three years? And how many organizations have actually gotten the tax credits, right? You know?
I can, last year, there were nineteen that were submitted in our region last year, and it is extremely competitive, and.
Exactly, what I'm saying is, what has come to us for tax credits that have been awarded, and I haven't, I haven't seen any. I think the more people, more organizations you support, the higher chance you have of somebody getting it.
Yeah, and it, it is extremely competitive, and again, you have a lot of need and, and a little bit of funding.
When you say revitalization, what does that mean in English?
What they're saying, what the state has said, is that you're going to look at the area, you're gonna have public hearings, and you're gonna assess how is our transportation, what is the drainage, what is the street lighting, what is the crime rate, what is the, if we put funds into this, what is the potential for business and economic development of the persons that are gonna live in there? So you have to look at it as a whole, and then once you say, we have all these issues, you look at the housing stock, then you'll say, this is what it's gonna cost to address each of these, and these are the potential funding sources, and this is our plan, so that by year ten, if we get funded like we wish, we will have revitalized the area. The city has a target area through CDVG funds, which is the census tract one-ten, which efforts have been to concentrate it on that area, to revitalize it, to bring it entirely up. But with limited funds on all areas, it's, it's gonna be very difficult to do.
Does the developer wanna say anything?
This is Don Pace.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, my name is Don Pace, and I'm with Siddle Tact Housing of Texas. We're based out of Florida, but I've probably done more developments in Texas than I have in Florida, so. The one that this would match up was, is Arbor Cove, which is right down the street in Donna, single-family homes. Right now, this is our third time applying for the same site. And the reason why we got beat last year, we had to have this revitalization plan. All you had to do is have a resolution from the city, a letter saying that the resolution, you got one point. Because that happened, San Benino got a deal. We didn't get our deal because we didn't go that route. So I said, this year, we're coming to the council and saying, guys, if you want us to build those hundred and twenty-five single-family homes and make that community grow, we're gonna need your help on this revitalization plan. Tammy's right, certain things have to be done. We only have to have one meeting for the people that live in that area. If y'all say, yep, let's pick that area that's in the city, we call it the revitalization, and then, because there's a lot of things that can be done in there, besides our hu, our housing. So you can bring commercial into that area. With our housing, it's gonna have some commercials, gonna have to come in there, take care of them, like grocery store, pharmacies, that kinda things. So you're actually putting a lot of money, which you're not spending a dime. We're gonna spend that money, twenty-two million dollars for those homes. So I think that alone would revitalize a whole lot of that area, even if it's in the county. It's gonna come to the point that that's gonna be annexed into the city at some point. So, well, we're asking you, if we can get the revitalization plan approved by this council, we have a meeting for the community to come in and express, hey, we don't want it, we don't want it, we don't want it. We'll walk away. But if you tell us tonight you're not gonna do the revitalization plan, that's six points. We got beat by one last year. Six points will kill it. And we, we wanna, we don't wanna spend any more money than we have to. Last year, we spent about fifty thousand dollars and got beat by one point. We don't wanna do that this year. We want your support and your help.
You'll be selling these homes, or these are rental homes?
They're rental.
And then people would rent from your corporation?
We have a third-party management company that comes in, and they're for people that work, people that are not criminals, people that have a good credit rating, and people that are citizens of the United States. That's who move into our homes. And the cheaper homes are for people that, teachers, ministers, we got all kinds living in our community because the rents are so low. So, but their houses cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build them. So they're just like market-rate houses, but people that make six percent or better of the median income can move in at a very cheap rate. Like a four-bedroom, a four-bedroom would rent for about six hundred and sixty-five dollars.
I've sold national tax credit programs.
It's the section forty-two tax credit program, and the state, each state, according to how many people they have, that's how much money they get. We have, in the eleventh region, which is here, there's, for the rural area, there's only like a million one for the credits, and for the urban, which is Harlingen, there's three and a half million. So, there's only gonna be two deals done in, in the urban, in the eleventh region this year. Only two got done last year, because there's not enough money to go around. Any questions?
Back to my question, can we support two projects? Will that?
Sure. I would suggest you do that. I would suggest you do that, for this reason. We may beat them on another point item, or they may beat us on another point, but I don't wanna get beat on six points. And I'm sure they, they wouldn't wanna get beat on the six points either, so. That's a killer, anywhere you look at it.
Well, I think the way to look at this is that the more irons we have in the fire, the better.
Better off you're gonna be.
Before the, for the community, I mean.
Yes, yeah, it's for the community, that's what it's for.
It could be a position where neither one of the projects take, but if we help both.
One of them may get plenty.
And one of them may.
We know that we're in the index area.
That's all I wanna know, is that from a scoring standpoint, it doesn't, it's not gonna.
It doesn't, no, it doesn't.
They get six points, we get six points, if you do the revitalization plan.
And y'all are competing, not just against each other, but against everybody.
Oh, yeah, we're against the whole valley. No, we're not just against somebody here in Harlingen.
Back to my point, is that the more.
More, more the merrier, right?
And you're gonna pay ample taxes on that, on those, I think, twenty-one.
The twenty-two million dollars that you're gonna put in there, that's, that's, that's the, you know, that's, that's the benefit to the.
Yeah, that's the benefit. First of all, we're gonna have probably two hundred and fifteen jobs for a year and a half there, for all the construction that's gonna go on, and then we'll have.
The property that you're, that you're looking at is already in the city.
Yeah.
So we don't have any annexation to worry about.
No.
It's just the surrounding area that's not in the city.
Right, it's, well, just, no, a lot of it is, a lot of it's in the city.
But part of the revitalization area, Tammy, is what you were saying, is outside.
May, may Mayor?
Yes.
I'm the ruler involved with this. Tammy keeps going to the colonias, which traditionally we have purposely left them out. But this area, Chester Park Road, Brazil Road, Cross to the Expressway, those are basically colonias. You can go tonight, today, or anytime tomorrow, and find horses, chickens, and all kinds, in the city limits. And the roads are atrocious, they need care there too. That's in the city limits, and that can be classified as revitalization.
Mayor, I'd like to just make a motion that we take action, approve and adopt the resolution that the Orange City Commission supports the establishment of a community revitalization plan.
Second.
Which one? The, the last one that's stat changes?
The twenty-four, yeah.
Last one you said?
The one that's stat.
Yeah, the one that, the resolution that, the modified that works for what, what we need, right?
The one that I, the one that I do is the, is the one that works. Hers is just, her resolution is just supporting.
I wanna clarify, Tammy, to the commission.
What we would, what would have to be done is a resolution that was submitted by the developer would have to be revised so that it only contains the part that the city has jurisdiction over, which is in the city limits. And if you wanted to designate that area as the area, then we could revise the wording, attach the map, show the area, and go forward. And they would go to Cameron County.
So on the motion, what is, what should I be taking, should I amend this?
I would amend it to include only the area that's located within the city limits of Harlingen.
I wanna amend the motion to adopt the resolution that only includes, that only includes the area that has, the city of Harlingen has jurisdiction over.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just then, to look at staff going to the county, and maybe getting additional help from them, or?
I, I think it'd be a great area to, you know, to build those houses in that area.
Yeah, because some of the needs.
Really good for that community. All those favors say aye, opposed, like, sign, motion carries. All right, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Back to. Item thirteen, consider to take action to authorize city manager assignment of number one to the MPO planning contract, the extended contract to December thirty-first, two thousand, what, sorry, air conditioner broken. Yeah, there's a second.
There's a second.
All those favors say aye, motion carries.
Gotcha.
Fourteen, presentation of improvements to US Highway eighty, raise Dixieland. Raised landscaping test completed Saturday after repelling.
How fast can you talk, Jeff?
Pretty fast, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Just a brief report on Saturday's Make a Difference Day at the raised medians along Frontage Road in Dixieland. Basically, we're gonna have registration of over one hundred students from Texas State Technical College that's gonna begin at seven. The landscaping will actually begin at eight. We will be planting over sixteen hundred various bushes and trees, and spreading over two thousand bags of mulch. Basically, the size of these areas, both on the north and south side, are the size of about two football fields. So we're gonna be mulching about two inches deep on either one of those sides. And I'd like to thank Keep Harlingen Beautiful for financing this entire project. That's over twenty-seven thousand dollars worth of improvements we're gonna make, including weed fabric, mulch, and all of the plants. Here's the, one of the, everybody probably recognizes this, is the city of Harlingen front sign on that raised median. This here is the north Frontage Road near Bass Pro Shops that we're gonna make improvements to. Those palm trees will stay the same. There's the south Frontage Road near Coles and Logan's. Each one of these tiered landscape areas will be landscaped very attractively, and I have some pictures following showing you how we're gonna, how we're gonna do that. The new drip irrigation system was installed in April. And so now, we modeled the improvements after the far interchange, in which they put different various plants. You can see the different tiers as well there. They use plants such as the firecracker bush, the Texas fire bush, blue plumago, yellow esperanza, which can grow into a shrub or a tree, Texas toponciana, which is a very vibrant red flower. And then you can see, they also used some olive trees. This is the kind of the scheme that they did. You can see to the right there, that's the blue plumago. On the backside, it's yellow esperanza. On the front here, you have the firecracker plant, as well as fire bush back behind it. We are planning on using the same scheme, and then that is what the final product will look like. So we're very excited to have the help from Texas State Technical College students, and plus, park staff will be there as well, to make this project a success.
When we can come out there.
And we would welcome you Commissioners and Mayor as well to come out and help us.
Okay, I think that'd be a fun, that'd be a great day on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let me, uh, let me let Gerald out of here. Actually, let Neil Murphy out here, because we're not gonna. Item twenty-nine, consider to take action to approve a bid for the construction of some property, the property is currently in the Sun Valley. Is there a motion to table?
I'll make it up to the table.
All those favors say aye, motion carries. We've got some more work we need to do with our legal staff, before we're prepared to go forward with that. Let's see, item eighteen, consider to take action to approve a contract with the Boys and Girls Club of Farmers for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, amount of one thousand six hundred and seventy dollars, nine six cents, for the teen service program.
Commissioners, this, yeah, this is a, this is approved in your budget?
All those favors say aye. Motion carries. Item nineteen, consider to take action to approve a contract with Boys and Girls Club of Farmers for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, amount of seven thousand six hundred and four dollars, reuse service program.
They both should go ahead and use this cancer.
There's a second, Mr. Schlep, which all those favors say aye. Motion carries.
You guys are gonna need to bring us harder stuff.
Okay. Item sixteen, consider to take action to accept or reject bids for the construction of the county park restrooms and the Arroyo Park restroom concession under bid number twenty thirteen oh two.
Mayor, let the motion accept the bids. Staff, break them down.
Second.
All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item seventeen, consider to take action to approve the renewal of the contract with the city's standing official for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen.
Thanks, I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those favors say aye, motion carries. Item twenty, consider to take action to authorize city manager to enter separate public highway after crossing improvement agreements with Union Pacific Railroad, with the rubber crossings on Twenty-Fifth Street, near East Jefferson Avenue, business seventy-seven East Jefferson Avenue, Twenty-Fifth Street, pedestrian bicycle truck project.
Mayor, I'd like to make that motion to authorize city manager to enter to the.
All those favors say aye.
I just have one question. Carlos, gotta start working at the ones over there where, in Fair Park? And Jackson Street now, right there? Those are all the cross in your farm park. Okay.
Well, these, these are for pedestrian crossings, for the hiking bike trail.
I'm talking about, I got, I got holes that are two feet deep, and cars are going over those things. Next.
Item twenty-one, I consider to take action to approve and adopt the resolution to appoint city representatives to Cameron President of District's Board of Directors for staggered two-year term.
May I mention this is a two-year term, and it expires December thirty-one this year, and our current representative is Commissioner Joey Green.
Motion, motion ready?
I think we should wait till after the election. The, the term doesn't expire till December thirty-first.
But as a citizen, I can still serve as a, as a board member.
Yeah.
I'd be glad to do that anyway.
I just wait till his term expires.
Okay, I mean, it's not a, you don't have to be elected official to serve. Serve as a.
What are the wishes of the commission? You wanna take action, or you're tabled?
Make sure that. Uh, we should. We should.
Hey, uh, ju, just to protect you, I, I have a concern. I don't know what the law is, but I have a concern that any of us elected people who can affect the tax rate within Harlingen beyond the Cameron County appraisal district, which can affect.
But we, we talked about this last year when.
Well, I wasn't here.
And the city attorney, Judge Coscos, is a, a board member.
I, I just wanna protect you.
Understood. Whatever the wishes.
Motion's already made.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Yeah, second.
So what is the motion? To, um.
To wait till the.
Till, wait till his term expires.
Well, I think we should, I don't know if we should wait till it expires, but we should probably address it later in the year.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
All right, all those. All right, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 23, consider to take action to approve and adopt a ordinance at first reading prohibiting smoking and the use of skateboards and other similar wheel devices at the Veterans Memorial Department.
Mayor Commissioners, you have an email from the Veterans Memorial Advisory Committee discussing some of the damage that we've already seen at the park due to what we believe are skateboarders and bicycles. They've asked us to create an ordinance, bring it forth to you, to prohibit smoking, but also skateboards, inline skates, or the wheel devices. So, that's what's been presented to you. Obviously, it would exempt wheelchairs and other medically necessary devices from those wheel device...
May I have a, any of them, read the caption?
Ordinance amending chapter 97 of the City Harlingen Code of Ordinance is adding a new section, 97.07, prohibiting smoking and the use of skateboards or other similar wheel devices at the Palm Park Veterans Memorial, providing for complication or endangerment of matters related to...
Is there a second?
Second.
All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 23, consider awarding four committee developer by grant housing representation for construction loans.
Mayor Members, Commissioners, and Mayor. Staffing up for bids, there were several people that picked up packets, only one submitted a bid. I'm going to go to Leon. Staff is right, making a recommendation that the contracts that he submitted be awarded to him. We asked the other contractors why they did not bid, and they said they all had too much work, they couldn't bid on the project, so he's done work for us before, so we recommend approval.
This, 23, it doesn't look like there's an action, just says consider. Are we supposed to take action to approve these staff recommendations?
Consider awarding four contracts, all right.
Well, we're considering it, but it doesn't say take action to award. Is that awarded?
I'd have to defer to the city attorney for that.
So, we can't take action on this?
It doesn't have an action, it just says consider awarding.
Is there, is there a delay? Can we come back at the next meeting?
I'm not certain. I think we can wait, and we can put it back on the next agenda.
If that's, that's what we're doing.
We, if the city attorney feels more comfortable doing that, we can come back and...
Well, I mean, it didn't say take action, it just says consider.
Make motion to table.
Second. Is there a second? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 26, consider to take action to approve and adopt a ordinance at first reading at mid-time 7:00. Chapter 70 of the Code of Ordinance by adding section 70.06 to regulate the operation of ordinary, vulnerable road users. Go ahead and read the caption.
An ordinance, City Harlingen, Texas, amended Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter 70 Traffic Regulation, City Harlingen, Texas Code of Ordinance is amended, adding section 70.06 regulating the use of vehicles near vulnerable road users, providing for definition, providing for affirmative offense, providing a penalty after exceeding $200 for violation, providing of violation, this ordinance is strictly liability open, providing for savings clause, providing for several federal controls, providing obligation, and remaining other matters related to foregoing.
Some of them are approved.
Could you translate that into English? What is a near vulnerable road user?
We talked about this a couple meetings ago, where we had pedestrians on the road and some cyclists, pedestrians, or...
More.
We're trying to ride away.
Police.
Police, police, fire.
Sorry, that's common sense.
We got to put into law something.
Okay. All those, is there a motion?
Yeah. Motion and second.
All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 27, board movements, are there any board movements?
No, Mayor.
All right, then we go on to item 30, consider to take action to continue or amend consulting agreement with David Sibley and Michael Millsap. David Sibley has notified us that he is resigning from the contract because he'd like to not do as much, not kind of slow down, and he's turning 65, and he'd like to slow down, and he's enjoyed working for the city for all, we've enjoyed having him work for us. But, and then Mike Millsap has recommended that Harold Smith, the deal, that Mike be allowed to subcontract, Harold Smith, that we just continue the contract with Mike and just noting that David no longer part of that contract. So, is there a motion, we can continue the contract with Mike Millsap and allow him to subcontract that work with Harold Smith?
Well, I was going to make the motion if we amend the consulting agreement to replace David Sibley with Harold Smith.
Okay, that's fine.
Second.
All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, mic signed, motion carries. All right, that concludes our meeting. Thank you.